Run down Trey. Work. Turn your phone down, Mr. Trey.
I'm sorry.
Go Tony, you're late.
Hey, I was waiting for you. Nick's not even here yet.
Yes, sir. Nick's not here yet.
Okay, everybody here?
Late for me.
Okay. I have to call a meeting toward the superintendent's information says the committee meeting of October 6th at 7:03. Let's start with the plug.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the Constitution of the republic of this state, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No voting is required, so we made a roll call. Okay, um, let's, um, Mr. Leonard, you have a report from IU 7.
I do have a report and acoustics in here are horrible, so put most people on here anyhow. But, here goes.
Yeah, I'm having a...
The IU board meeting was held 7:30, at 7:30 on 9/23/14 at the WIU building, which is typical. Fifteen members present, two absent, which I would consider a fair enough turnout. No citizens were present, so there were no comments from citizens. All financial reports and committee reports and typical school startup business was conducted. Clarview held its open house on September 24th and all went well. Contracts that were approved at the meeting included classroom rentals and various transportation issues with first student. Two teachers resigned for other employment and were replaced the same night in separate motions. Also, two classroom assistants resigned for other employment and were also replaced. Many various employees, many various employees were approved for medical leaves, family leaves, parental leaves of various durations, which were replaced by subs for their durations. The elections were held for the 2015 PSBA officers at large representatives. And that concludes my report, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Dr. Trey, libraries and legislative council.
Thank you. No report related to libraries. As far as legislative council, we do have the PSBA conference coming up. I'll just consolidate that quickly because there are platform items that are part of it. And there's also a whole different philosophy related to our PSBA operation, which I'll discuss in a couple of minutes. But first, I'd like to thank Brett as our board secretary. We didn't really discuss this because there was no real controversy or issue based on, it was the vote or election of the PSBA officers. And Brett voted for us in the last couple of weeks, Brett? Is that correct?
It was about two weeks ago.
About two weeks ago. And that was toward the candidate, so there were no challenges. It was the same, it was the recommended slate. The only challenge we had was in the office of president of PSBA. And it was the same person who challenged the previous year. And when we voted last year, we really, there was no real excitement or concern from us as a group. So, he voted for us as an entity that we accepted the slate as it was. So, again, just informing you of that. I appreciate that because had not, we had until 11 o'clock, or excuse me, 11:59 tonight in order to send in our ballot. The second thing relates to the platform for the PSBA conference. Again, the whole process has changed quite substantially. Based on membership, which includes our input, PSBA for this coming year is focusing on the pension crisis, charter school reform, that includes the removal of equities in the system. Charter school formula for special education because there's really an extreme overpayment issue that's just tearing the school districts apart. And the fourth priority was the adequate and fair funding. What they've done with these priority issues, they're focusing on, but this is being approached in a wide variety of areas. Not only through our legislature, legislature, but through lobbies and through local governments and so on. So, it's a mass attack per se to try to improve in all these areas. It's also obviously more well-defined and that's, we can draw that information up at any time from our, from the PSBA website. But now, breaking it down into platform issues, as you remember in the past, it used to be hundreds of platform issues that we would have to break down in areas. But they've simplified the whole process, just like they simplified the whole process of the elected leadership and how the regions work and that type of thing. So, I'll just cover these very quickly. The first area is, relates to as far as a legislative priority is, they're pushing with our legislators to deal with effective child-centered public education. And that's broken down into curriculum instruction, student assessment, graduation requirements, special education, and career in technology. The second area that, under legislative efforts, are strengthening the work of local boards. And that deals with personnel issues, specifically staffing and evaluation, collective bargaining, and pension reform. Then it goes also then to school board operations, school construction, safety and discipline issues, and education-related mandates. That's area number two. On a legislative area also, number three, and there are only four. Number three is increased equity and accountability. And that's pretty much focused on charter school reform. And the fourth area, again, that's replaced all these mandates that we used to have hundreds in the past, is secure and adequate and equitable funding. And these are the areas. In the funding formulas, in the use of local taxes, in property tax issues, in taxing authority, and in transportation. Also, that's going to be held at the, these will all be approved on the first day of the PSBA conference. And along with that also, will be nine amendments to the bylaws. That's all based on organization. There's nothing in there controversy, nothing in there affects us in any way, shape, or form, or inhibits, or threatens us in any way, or even benefits, well, benefit possible. Only because the organization, efficiency of that organization. I will say with the conference coming up to conclude, that when I'm there, some things I think may be worthwhile for us that I'll bring back are, they have a facility referendum, which they're working on, which I thought might be an interesting, how it's being approached. A school district was able to pass a seventy-some million dollar referendum in their school district through a tremendous process. And if we have to have to deal with that, and we've come close a couple of times, I think it would be worthwhile that we gather as much information to be knowledgeable of that as possible. The second one I thought was about an active shooter drill. Several school districts have actually gone through and brought their community safety organizations together, police force, emergency, and so on, and actually have done that to duplicate and prepare for events that have happened unfortunately too close to us. So, I think that may be worthwhile process also. I'll provide information on that when I come back. Obviously, school law, Mr. Rungo and his firm will be presenting a school law summary to all the PSB representatives in that area in the state of Pennsylvania. There's something on cyberbullying, apparently some new things to deal with that that we can handle that may be worthwhile in the school district. Couple more things are expulsion options. I'm skeptical about that because you've heard about that expulsion does have use and value. Is there something opposite that or something new or brand new that may work? Maybe. We'll see. It seemed interesting. And a couple others were career technology explosion. That has really caught on. And Mr. Petrusi will be excited about that because the high employment rate has been shown by career technology graduates is overwhelming compared to our typical high school graduates and all because they're going more and more into the tech field and they're analyzing and evaluating where the jobs are. Probably far better than a lot of institutions, including our four-year schools in the area. So, they're getting a high emphasis because they are so effective. And so, we're learning more strategies in that area to try to make it more appealing to our own students. So, there's no stick limit we've known over the years to be assigned to them. And the last area is on the Western PA Summer STEM Academy. That's come out in a local school system. I believe it may be Mount Lebanon. But they're trying to draw on all the students from Western PA through the summer and to draw them in to enhance the overall regional resources of students for the STEM approach. So, we have some value out of that too, maybe some of our kids involved. But that's where I'll be going in that direction. And that's all I have to report, Madam President.
Thank you, Dr. Trey. Any PlanCon news? Any PlanCon news?
PlanCon, yes, PlanCon. They're very close, as skeptical I am about the success and capabilities to get anything done at our legislative level. They're very close to getting PlanCon revisions being taken care of. There's no money, but they're simplifying the process. They're simplifying the process.
They released twenty-one million dollars last week for that project.
I was gonna say, I thought I heard that.
They released. That was a release.
Twenty-one million.
That's to catch up the many schools ahead of us that have been...
That's minutia.
It is.
Paying out of their debt.
It's more than nothing.
Yeah. Thank you, Brett, for not letting me come too negative. They did release the money to take care of our dented colleagues who have been paying out of their pocket because they didn't have the money in a timely manner. We're not gonna say it, in my opinion. That's it. That's all I have, Madam President.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Trey. Mr. Petrusi, career tech.
Thank you, Madam President. You got the medicine. You're back at the projects, about ninety-nine percent complete. I mean, I'll be ninety-seven. It's upper nineties anyway. Dr. Trey, thanks for your comment for the graduates of Central BoTech because there is a definitely high employment rate that's, it's very, well, there's a couple areas really high, almost a hundred percent, that they're doing well. We sent out bids for the cosmetology. I explained before the cosmetology. As you know, about a year and a half, two years ago, whenever I asked our board here, like I can ask for, which I still like to thank you for, we had to have all nine boards. You announced we approved the six million dollar bond issue to put in boilers, chillers, the lighting, et cetera. As you know, six million doesn't go very far. But we gotta get down to six million. We were originally at nine million. We gotta get down to six million because there were two school districts. Had to be announced, so they would not go along with it. So, we find that all the homework and all the campaigning, and they said, "We get down to six million, we'll vote for it." So, okay, we got it down to six million. And it was unanimous, and that work was done. But to do that, one of the things we had to drop was cosmetology. So, now, we're gonna go to cosmetology for our fund balance. Our fund balance is approximately four hundred and some thousand dollars. We're estimating the cosmetology bid is gonna be put out, it was out of August 25th. The bids are, in thirty days, September 25th, we're gonna vote on it at our October 15th meeting. The work is gonna be done evenings. And we hope to have this work done before, we hope that by springtime, have it all done evenings. That's, it should be complete by that time. And this is a project completion, I have January 30th, but I hope that's very true. Okay, the, I also got some enrollment figures for you. Enrollment is, went up again this year, approximately a thousand kids. It's a fourteen percent increase, what they're saying. In Pentraffer, we are the third highest in the total of all, but we're number eight as far as students at Central BoTech. Number one is Hemphill. Number two is, I believe, Mount Yaw. Number three in enrollment is Norwin. Number four is, I'm gonna give number four here, Southmore. Number five is Greensburg Salem. Number six is Bellburn. Number seven is Mount Pleasant. Number eight is Pentraffer. And number nine is Genet. And here's how the shops go as far as the enrollment. Number one is automotive mechanics. Number two is cosmetology. And number three is health occupations. Number four is protective service. Number five is welding. And number six is auto body. So, this, that's how, that's most of the top six I can remember. I'm not gonna go through all the, all the twenty-four shops. But that's the top six in the enrollment of the cosmetology. And I have the figures for you for the steps and bids for our next meeting, what we're gonna pay for the cosmetology. Open stage is an entire thousand dollars and I'll be two fifty at the most. And I cannot thank Carl Spudie enough. He has been so, so helpful. He's a school director from Yaw who works at Betis. And he's, I'm sure Jay may know him better than I do, but he's a very astute person. Big Marty Davidson guy. He's, he saved us a lot of work and a lot of money, and he's on top of this. He says, "If we don't do this now, the cosmetology, by 2016, the code's gonna change, and you could have, maybe a possibly a fifteen and twenty percent increase in costs." So, he pushed us through to get the cosmetology done. And I'll give more updates in our meeting, it's on October 15th at this time. That's all I have, Madam President.
Well, while you have four, you wanna, do you give us numbers on that fourth?
Okay. Our meeting was on the September 29th, last Monday. Halloween parade is gonna be the 26th in the American Legion. And also gifts and prizes for the kids that we take care of, that's through the auction. The, this, I'm sorry, I should've started with, our playground has passed some of the highest participation rate in our playground in our history. They said that the rate was so high that we had some excellent young directors. And you can't believe how much that makes a difference, but that's really a big, and trick-or-treat nights are 31st. It's that way in every place. And that's the first playoff night. And the sixth day, firemen lines up, you know, to help us make sure the traffic's broken, kids go across, stop some traffic, et cetera. That's all ready to go. And that's, that should be good. Our fund balance, we had to pay for our attorney, I mean, our engineers for five thousand dollars. Paramount Playground, we should know by end of November, we get a hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant. And right now, our ending fund balance is thirty thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars. And that's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Ken Burrow. Anything?
I'm sorry.
Ken Burrow?
No report.
We, I apologize, Nick. We were amazed at some of the numbers you were talking about within the program.
Oh.
We just had some questions that I guess I should ask you. With regards to the folks in the gas industry, what category would those kids fall under with regards to, is it welding? Or mic fitting, or what? We were just commenting that the placement for those kids is tremendous.
Okay. Let me see. But we did discuss that, and I, it's, let me see if I can get this straight. But we did, it's the second logistics warehouse. Construction trades. And I brought that up before, see, that was definitely brought up. It's not listed. Fire line is separate, welding separate, bay and mechanic. I go try and test the robots. That was definitely brought up as far as the solar power, wind power, natural gas. It was all discussed, and it is in a category. No, I don't have it here, but I will definitely bring it up, but that is, no, it's not here.
It's okay. I just thought it would be in the top six.
I agree. I thought it would be number one.
Well, I didn't know where, but I just thought it'd be in the top six because of the amount of job opportunities there are.
Yeah. Nick, I think it is. It's under an obscure name that they're all grouped together. So, many of those kids are so needed, they're adding internships almost from the onset. They're working for companies.
I want those shops for you. I'd describe in athletic order, auto collision, automotive, carpentry, commercial and, and commercial arts, computer science, construction trades. That's building maintenance, my knowledge. Cosmetology, culinary, electrical, graphic design, health occupations, horticulture, heating, ventilating, logistics and warehouse, machine trades, that's a big one too. Masonry, mechanic, mechatronics, I think that's robotic. Painting and decorating, plumbing, power line, protective services, accessory health services, et cetera. Sports therapy and welding, that's the shop side list, but we did discuss that. I did bring that up. And I'll follow through on that for the next meeting.
It would make sense, Nick, that plumbing would be a good candidate for that. I'm around that industry a lot, and there's a lot of...
Say that, welding probably, right?
Plumbing and welding, yeah.
Welding is number five. Protective services.
Oh, welding was number five?
Yes.
Oh, well, that's probably what it is, right there.
There's one, because there, we discussed the solar energy, the wind energy, and our show is shelved, drilling for natural gas, et cetera. We did discuss all that. Especially we put the new boilers in, and their auxiliary pump is a natural gas pump. Remember, before I told you, gentlemen, the ladies and gentlemen, it was submerged, and we had to take it out because of contamination, we had to take it out. But I will definitely bring it up on the message. Thanks, good questions.
No, thanks, Nick. I probably should've asked you instead of Jay, but he was next to me.
Nobody report.
Jay knows all, so I was hoping I could cut back on it.
All right, any other comments? Okay, now P-Tark. That's me. A lot of interesting stuff with P-Tark. I think many of you will be excited about what's going on with P-Tark districts. As you all heard, the school district has decided to take the P-Tark building back from P-Tark. The P-Tark building in years has been quite the financial drain.
School district.
No, well, I was gonna kind of elaborate on. Okay, but guys, you wanna explain?
The P-Tark board met, and we decided that it was time to actually not have the P-Tark building anymore due to the cost and all the updates to the building.
Right, right. And I was kind of getting there a little bit more around.
No, I'm sorry.
That's okay, that's okay. For example, year-to-date, the income at the P-Tark building has been eighty-seven hundred dollars. Expenses, if you exclude the building loan, the payment, we made an advance payment on the building loan. If, I mean, not building, the parking lot loan, if you exclude that, the expenses are seventeen thousand, seven hundred. So, you have a nine thousand dollar hole that they're running in on the P-Tark building alone. So, at a previous meeting, we had talked about, at the P-Tark meeting, you know, giving it back to the school district. What we've learned over the last month or so is that when P-Tark is done using the building, based on the deed from 1995, it actually goes back to the Penn Township, the municipality of Penn Township. And they have the option to use it for a municipal purpose. If they are not interested in using it for any municipal purposes, it then comes back to the school district. That being said, Level Green Fire Department, and this was discussed at our P-Tark meeting this afternoon, has expressed interest in using the building. Number one, we're not a hundred percent sure that qualifies as a municipal service since it is a volunteer fire department. And we are looking to that, and we're thinking it does, but we're not a hundred percent sure. And number two, there's loans on the building, and so that all will have to be worked out. But we also had another person step forward. Dino D'Amico was also interested and wants to be kept in the loop. I think he's the owner of Snap Fitness, if I'm correct. So, a lot of possibilities going on here that we're working through. So, basically, more to come on that. But because of that, taking the P-Tark building away, getting that financial drain away from them, and some other changes that we are being, that are being made within the P-Tark organization, the contribution, we worked on the budget today for 2015. And the overall contribution requirements from the different participants has been reduced. The school district, our amount is being reduced from forty-six thousand dollars a year to thirty-six thousand dollars a year. So, overall, the reduction is approximately twenty-three percent. So, all the municipalities ought to be happy about that. The whole budget as a whole, whole budget as a whole, as we've done it. But the whole budget is, the overall budget is down also approximately twenty-three percent. A little bit more on some financial stuff. The fund balance as of right today is approximately seventy-three, seventy-four thousand. Last year, it was seventy-three thousand, so we're pretty much the same. At today's meeting, we officially accepted Cheryl's retirement, which will be effective on January 9th, 2015. And we approved a contract for her replacement, Linda Byers. Did I, did I miss anything?
Yeah.
No, you came with me.
Tony, what do they attribute the ten K in savings to for us?
Well, number one, they're not gonna have, you know, we're replacing Cheryl with Linda Byers, and there's gonna be a reduction in salary. There's gonna be a reduction in salary because of, you know, less experience, whatever. Also, the township is gonna be helping with some of the financial, running some of the finances for them. So, that's, has eliminated some responsibility from the employees. I think most of it is gonna be between reduction in employee costs and savings of, on that P-Tark building. Because if you figure, if they're losing money, we all share in that loss of money. We're all paying for that. So, those are the two biggest components. Oh, the other thing is, every once in a while, you all do this with your homes. I know I do with my gas company. You see check rates, and our bills for electric bills have just been climbing up very steeply. And so, Cheryl shopped them around, and we are switching suppliers. We're going back to West Penn Power. She hopes to get a nice savings.
The biggest savings is coming from the building, huh?
Yeah, the building and, you know, a little reorganization.
And what's sad about it, the building has the highest number of rentals this year.
Yeah.
Numbers, highest it's ever been.
But Cheryl also said that, I mean, we're still losing money because the costs are just so high to keep that building operational. So, that she said, "If we were to keep on using it in the capacity we are, we would have to raise the rent on it to help cover some of these costs." Yeah, one of the things that we discussed that was brought up today was the possible, possibility of Painter Town Fire Hall working or merging with Level Green. I mean, that's just, it's all speculation. And I kind of didn't want to go real far down that path until we sort some things out and have opportunity to meet with the parties involved. But bottom line is, we have interest in the building. It's just a matter of how that works out. And Level Green, if they do, Level Green Fire Department, if they do take over the building, they are not looking for the building. They would be more or less looking for that land.
They will sue the park.
Yeah. Well, we don't know. We have to discuss that. Yeah, if they, if they end up taking the building, they're gonna have to assume the parking lot, though. So, there are things to be worked out here.
Quite honestly, I mean, I don't know if anyone's, talking to anyone. We just received a letter.
Yeah.
So...
It's all very preliminary.
There's a lot of it, and that's, I don't want people to get...
Yeah, yeah, that's why I'm not, I'm not saying a whole lot, only because we don't know a whole lot. Everything's, there's a lot of speculation. We just got this letter of interest, was it last Thursday?
I received mine Thursday.
Yeah, I received it Thursday, so we, very preliminary, very preliminary. A lot of things to be worked out yet. So, and that's all I have. And now, Dr. Harris, Community Education Fund.
All right, it's that monthly time again where we give our update. And I know our next meeting is this Wednesday at seven o'clock at the high school cafeteria. We always invite new members, and I feel invited, and members last time, and both Sarah and Sally came. So, we appreciate having extra people.
Good to see you there, Bill. Come on, Bill.
Bill!
You might want to come as well. It's this Wednesday at seven. And you already helped us before with your business donations and so on. And that's kind of what the foundation does. So, you're already a step in the game. We will be having an alumni event again for the October 17th homecoming game. Do you have any information, Phil, you want to share about that, or just?
I don't think, I think everybody knows that our big fundraiser is PT's Got Talent. We're in the process, I believe, of signing up our talented students. And I believe that we should be having the...
Addition shortly?
Addition very shortly. So, just keep that in the back of your mind. It's in January. It's a very great, great event. Last year was quite a success. And we have a lot to be proud of the students in this district, and it's a great showcase for the talent that we do have. So, circle that date, please, whatever that date is right now. We don't have it, but...
We'll keep you updated. And that's all I have for the foundation.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Harris. We will not be breaking for an executive session we had prior to the meeting tonight to discuss student matters, personnel matters, real estate matters, and negotiations. So, we will continue back to Dr. Harris for information.
Sure, information. October 17th, that's our first in-service day for teachers. We were doing a district-wide safety drill for all the teachers and admin to practice our emergency management plan. Chief Otto has arranged to do a drill involving our local EMS to give them an opportunity for them to practice what they would do for an emergency at our school district as well. It will give all school personnel an option to practice. We had a plan. We reviewed the plan, but this actually gives us a chance to actually do mock emergency involving the police force, the ambulance, and potentially the fire. On that day, we were also having a presentation by Forbes Hospital, as well as a drug seven R for the staff to identify the different types of drugs and what to look for. Sports season, we got some sports news. This Friday's football game against Shaler will be broadcast live on Comcast, on Xfinity, on demand. And it's a big week for the soccer team. Both the boys and girls play Northern at home this week. Winner of these games will win the section. The boys' game is Tuesday at 7:45, and the boys are currently eleven-o. And the girls play Wednesday at 7:30, and they're currently twelve to one. So, exciting games. Please come out and support the teams. Great games.
How's field hockey doing?
An update from field hockey.
I can tell you, they've lost two games so far.
Okay.
They're still in contention, but they have big games coming up against Dorset, Allegheny, and Pine, Richland, and that'll determine whether they play us or not.
All right, because they've always had, the last couple of years, they've been so good.
Thank you, Brett.
You're welcome. Deer Valley, last week, the fifth graders went to Deer Valley. We had amazing weather. Kids had a great time. I'd like to thank all the volunteers who helped make the trip possible, as well as the school board, and especially our video kids who did an excellent job. Thank you, Mr. Vincent and crew, because without you, we wouldn't have a tape of the loss. We've been going since nineteen ninety. Next year will be our twenty-fifth year, and they're planning a special jacket or shirt design and a patch to commemorate it. It's kind of exciting that we're twenty-five years.
jacket or shirt to sign and a patch to commemorate it. It's kind of exciting every twenty-five years. Bus safety, I wanted to just share this information with you. Um, we had an accident with our Queen of Angels bus this morning that could have been more severe. As the bus was stopped on Painter Town Road, a car came from behind and wanted to avoid hitting the back of the stopped bus. So, so they went off to the right-hand side, and when they did it, they actually knocked out the door that was open with their side of the car. Why this was scary, the kids just got on the bus. So fifteen seconds sooner, they would've been standing there. So it was all within that time. They actually were just right there on the bus, so. Just want to remind everyone, please drive safely. Watch out for our buses. I know they stop them often. I understand, because I, I sat behind them at around one-thirty myself saying, who makes the bus? So, so I've done it, so please just be patient. Um, student learning assistance, the petition for the unit clarification that was filed with the Pennsylvania Labor Board on November fifteenth, two thousand thirteen by the Penn Trafford Educational Association was officially withdrawn by the association. Uh, we received notice that it was assigned and approved by the Labor Relations on October first, granting their, um, petition to withdraw. Remember, last month, we approved the memorandum of understanding for our student learning assistance. And when we made the motion, it sounded like we was including them in the bargaining unit, and that was my fault. And how the motion was written, actually, we was making the memorandum not to include them into the bargaining unit. So I do apologize for having any error that was caused by that. And finally, I have, um, Scott Engle is gonna give us an update on on-hand schools in the morning.
Yeah, we just have, uh, on, if you recall, a few months ago, we did a presentation on on-hand schools, which is the database software that, that houses all of our data, PSSAs, Keystone, PVOS, and, and, and other data. So our administrative training's gonna be on October fourteenth, so we hope to use that, uh, to help us with our student achievement and, uh, especially with our growth, which we need to work on. So, uh, just wanna give you an update on that and look forward to that training. Uh, we also have, uh, I'll give you an update on a construction project. And just in case anybody needs an update on that, on our website, every week we put a new mini slideshow on the construction and what's happened the previous week and what's going to happen. So if anybody has any questions and wants an update, uh, you can refer to our district website to get an update there. Uh, it's been going very smoothly. Uh, actually, I'm pleasantly surprised at, about how well the project's been going. Uh, we have some bumps in the road here and there, but, you know, Nate Hank, myself, uh, Lowbar, the construction company, we all seem to work very well together to resolve any issues that come up. Uh, we're ahead of the project in some areas, behind in some areas, but a lot of that is because it's, we just need lead time for event, uh, equipment and windows and things like that. That's what's holding us up. It's certainly not, you know, the construction workers or any lack of effort or anything like that. But, uh, once this first phase gets done, uh, all those issues will be, will be ironed out and I think we'll be caught up on all the phases. But we still anticipate the project being done on, uh, in August, September of, uh, two thousand sixteen, so we're on, on target for that. Um, one thing I did wanna mention is the bus loop will be under, is under construction right now, but it should be finished up in a couple of weeks. We will be paving out there probably, uh, next week or two. And what that will do is all the buses will now come around that parking lot out front. They will not go, uh, behind the building. So, uh, we'll be meeting with the bus company to, um, get a new bus lineup, so the kids are gonna have to be reprogrammed on to where they get their bus in the afternoon. Uh, we'll work that out, uh, in the next couple of weeks. But we'll have a new pattern for the buses in the morning, so everything, uh, is on pace to work out all right. I'll have, uh, Nate and Hank gonna give us a little bit of update on the whole project.
And with that new bus pattern, we're going to have a new traffic pattern for cars too, because once the buses opened up, well, cars will no longer be able to drive the whole way around the building.
Yes, and when that bus loop goes in, the whole premise of that is to keep the buses from going around the building. And the reason that is, is we wanna start the annex, which is on this area over here. So we wanna start the annex and we don't want cars and buses traveling through that construction zone. So we wanna make sure that bus, uh, loop got finished before the weather got too cold and paved. So now, probably the end of October, early November, they'll start the annex, start the bigger footer, get the foundation in, and get rolling with that. So that's the whole idea. You probably noticed there's some construction out here, out by the dumpster. That is a new preschool area. So the fencing that's gonna go for the outdoor play area for the preschool is going in there. So if anybody asks you, that's what that construction going on. And actually, that's an area that we weren't planning on doing, but Lowbar is just thinking ahead and trying to get ahead of the project and wanted to take care of that while they had some time and had, uh, good weather to take care of it.
Yeah, absolutely. And, uh, and so the update I was gonna give is the overall schedule went really good shape overall on the project. I mean, no issues with the finish date that we have. Kind of what's, I guess, it's not really, I guess it's holding up more. It's just the new normal of what construction is anymore. Because what happens is when you bring the contractors on board, they get their semitals together, which is all the product data, things that they need to use. Uh, it takes a lot to get from manufacturers and send it to Hank who's really fast in reviewing it, making sure it's what was specified, checking out everything, and then sending it back. And it's just the lead times on things. Um, light fixtures are a good example. We were talking about today, and I'll talk about that's kind of what we're waiting for, for a band room to be able to turn that back over. It used to be you could get it right off the shelf for two weeks. You could have everything. Now it's six to eight weeks. It's just one of those things where material, finished material, the stuff you needed at the very end is what takes a very long time to get now. That's just kind of, since the economy crashed, no one holds anything on shelving anymore. What they do is when your project orders, the manufacturer makes it, ships it to you directly. So they do it by orders now versus having a lot of stock on the shelf that you could just pull from. So it's kind of what we're dealing with, that first couple of phases. But what happens is when you get out of the first two phases, you've already ordered everything for the entire project. As you move forward, it's just here. You know, we order all the light fixtures for the project at once. That's how you get better pricing, and then we just have them here. So as we need them in different areas, and that's just one example, but that's as we move forward, it helps out a lot. Uh, so the bus loop, to give everyone an update on bus loop, we're planning on the pavers immobilized next week. First thing they do is it takes them a day or two. They put all the stone down. That's why you don't see it. And then they actually then put the paving on top of that, so, um, and the next week, beginning of the following week. That, you know, worst case, it's really weather dependent. You know, looking at my phone, I could see rain all next week. You don't know what it's gonna do. So weather dependent, that'll be, uh, in the next week, beginning of the following week. The paving deadline is in November, you know, to beat the cold weather, so we're way ahead of that, so we won't have any issues with that. Uh, they're also gonna try to get that auditorium parking lot, that new parking that we added over there, done as well. We got a little bit of storm work to do. It's the same thing. As long as the weather holds out, they can get that work done. And while the paver's here, they'd like to go ahead and pave that as well, so we can turn that back over to you. Um, and then you'll have some additional parking spaces. Uh, the English classrooms are moving along very well. All the main mechanical, electrical in that area's been pretty much completed at this point. They're just finishing up some small electrical, running data. Uh, we started paint. Uh, we're gonna start putting the rest of the, the ceilings back in in that area. And Scott said we're waiting on the unit ventilators, which come at the end of the month, um, and also the flooring as well, which will probably come about the same time. Um, so that area should, uh, complete at the end of November, beginning of December. We'll be able to turn that over, just a little bit earlier than we thought, so things are going real well through there. Uh, the administration area, if you walk through there right now, looks completely different. Uh, what we're waiting on there is, um, doors and hardware, which always takes a while to get, and li- light fixtures again, um, and also the casework for that. Um, so what you'll see is they'll get it painted, ceilings in, and it'll seem like it kind of sits there for a little bit, but that's all finished material. So once it comes in within a week or so, they can complete it and turn it back over. So all the major stuff in that area is completed, the stuff that takes a long time to do, the demolition. Uh, the band area's the same way. Um, if you walk in the band room now, they were painting and getting ready to put the ceilings back in, finishing the small electrical items. Then we're just waiting on the flooring and light fixtures to get here. Uh, the library itself, the library, um, mechanical, electrical plumbing, roughing is going on. Uh, what you may not know is there actually is a lot of roughing in that library, a lot of, uh, especially plumbing and mechanical, because all those labs that we do over the summertime, all the utilities feeding can actually come in the library and turn up because the labs are right above it. So that, so you do have a lot of plumbing, mechanical work in there. Uh, but we're still scheduled to complete that around the end of February.
Yes, just, we should be able to get, hopefully, we'll be able to get in the library, uh, in February for our board meetings.
Yeah.
And then, once the project moves along, our, our long-term plan for board meetings, we have a, uh, LGI, Large Group Instruction Room that's going to go in near the main office. So, uh, our, our goal is to, uh, move into that area for our board meetings in the future, so, uh, next year, hopefully, we'll be down there.
Yeah, and while we're waiting for some of those finished materials, our prime contractors have done a really good job, but we're working at some other areas, some areas we're planning on working on for a while, uh, just to get ahead. Um, so what Scott was talking about, the preschool and that fencing that goes around the new playground they're working on right now. They're working on the wall that goes right out here, which actually encloses, um, the courtyard out here for the cafeteria and getting that done right now. Um, looking ahead to let you kind of, oh, I almost forgot the annex. So the annex, as soon as the bus loop is done, you're able to drive on it. That's when we'll close that loop road down. We'll start on the annex. If you look out there right now, all the rebar that you need for those concrete foundations is actually already here. They're starting to tie some of it up and get it ready, so we can really get a jump on it as soon as, um, we get the bus loop closed. The current bus loop closed. Uh, looking ahead, as soon as we finish the English areas, we're gonna jump in the back. Uh, we're also gonna try to get a few of the social studies and science classrooms to kind of stack on top of each other done as well. So that'll give us a few additional classrooms done this school year that they weren't planning on having done before. Um, so the goal is to try to get a few more classrooms done. Uh, they're also going to, um, start on the nurses area now. If you walk right out of the cafeteria, you'll see the tenth bag room was built. So we, where that bag room is, is where the nurses area goes. So that wasn't scheduled to start after the first of the year, um, but they have some time, so they're gonna start that now and get that done, hopefully, a little bit earlier. Um, one of the things Scott sent out, I think, before was about some changes we have had. A couple of issues have run into the project, nothing major. Um, electrical out of code, so to explain that a little bit more, there's a lot of electrical that we touch in this building. You know, a lot of switches and things that we move. Any of that that's out of code, the contractors own fixing that as they go through. And they're running new wire, new cabling, any of that, they already own it and they're fixing it. What they're running into is some of the lights, existing lights that we're, uh, that we're not replacing. You know, some of that wiring that we've run into. And, you know, it's been small things, but it's how that wire's supported as it goes across the grid. The little junction boxes you see in the ceiling, um, aren't supported properly, so we gotta run a rod down to connect to that so that they're properly supported. Some little items like that that we found that the electrical inspector wants us to get fixed, so everything's up to code before we close off that area.
There, there are things that were exposed when they did the demolition.
Yeah, until you pull down the ceilings, you can't tell.
You see things like, uh, an electrical box that's, that's supported by a piece of conduit instead of supported by a hanger. And that's, that doesn't meet the, the current electrical codes. So when the electrical inspector comes through, he sees it, he says, we gotta, we have to take care of that. And if it's an electrical box where the contractor was going into it, like they said, to, to either take wires out of it or put new wires into it, then he would own bringing it up to current code. If it's an electrical box that he was not touching because we weren't doing anything for this project, then it's a box that, that would be an additional cost to fasten or bring up the code. It, it, it doesn't, at one point, we thought it might be a, a pretty big type of deal, but as we go through and we look at it, it's not amounting to a, a large.
Just in summary, there will be a change order to address it. So it's going to cost us some money to address it. We don't think it's gonna be crazy, but, you know, and there are some small issues that we've run across, some change orders that are gonna come up, and Nate's been keeping, we get credits here and there. We also get negatives. And so it's, but we're gonna have some change orders at some point. And it's nothing huge, but, uh, we're keeping it under control. Uh, keep in mind, we do have about a one point two million dollar contingency, uh, to address these kinds of problems, but we, we are running into some change orders.
And we're not talking numbers at the one point two at this point. We're talking numbers in the,
Tens of thousands.
In the fives to the tens of thousands. We're not talking big numbers. Like, for instance, when they, when they also did some demolition, there was a piece over in the band area. The wall goes all the way up to the other side of the deck in some spaces, in other places it doesn't. It, it needs to go all the way up. They're working in that area. We have to tell them to go ahead and do that work now while they're in there. We haven't got the pricing on it yet to go over, but there'll be a small change order for something like that. Because it's something that has to happen. It was in distant condition that, that was exposed during demolition.
Be careful. That e- that electrical, um, change for supporting those blocks, the original number I saw quoted was fifty thousand, so you say it won't be that much.
We don't think so. And the only reason to say we don't think so is because we haven't taken the ceilings out everywhere. But as you can see, the school, we've taken a lot out and we haven't done anything major. Um, we found one feeder line, which basically is a line that goes from one panel to another that needs to be redone, but that's still in a few thousand. That's not in the tens or anything like that. So we're just, we're being conservative because you just never know what you could run into, but it's looking like it's not gonna be as bad as we thought.
Yeah, I don't even think the old code would accept those where they are.
No, no, they wouldn't. So that's why we're like, I don't.
It's, it's the recent code. It's, it's the old code too.
Yeah, yeah.
We don't know how it passed. I see that in a few things I'm poking my face.
But it's here. It's here and we're moving forward.
Yeah, and that's exactly why there's a contingency for things like that, especially in a renovation. It's something you could never have bid, because if you just said, you know, told the electric contractor, oh, put some money in for this, it would've been huge. It would've put in hundreds of thousands, not knowing what it was, would've inflated the number. So this is definitely the best way, because as they fix the work, they have us sign off on tickets, so we can verify that it's done.
I can tell you, Borg, I've monitored many projects over the years, and this is a very difficult type of project to move forward, because anything you change, especially on the outside, you change a parking space, you change, uh, dirt work, you change paving. Anytime you change paving, change storm water management, so it's like a bowl of jello. Anytime something changes, it changes other things. I'm very familiar with that. So hearing what I'm hearing and seeing what I'm seeing, I think, considering all that, it's going more smoothly than I expected.
That's all I have. If there's any question, questions.
All right, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I got to email.
As far as information, um, two more things. When, um, Tony received, I actually received some positive, um, feedback to you from the Veterans Day celebration. Do you wanna share the email that she received or?
Yeah, I received a, uh, an email from a man who attended the reception before the football game where we were honoring the veterans. Actually, at the, at that evening, he did stop me and thanked me for putting together that event. And he sent me an email last week to specifically thank, um, Dr. Trey and Mr. Engle um, for organizing the event. He was extremely grateful and really enjoyed the night and the food, the company, everything.
We got a lot of feedback too, and Dr. Trey did an excellent job reading.
Yeah.
Can still read.
Yep. Also, I wanna thank, um, Mr. Benson for bringing everyone here to train. How many kids do you have out there? I think there's more than this school.
This is a record, but it's also approaching the end of the ninth grade period, so.
Ah.
It's funny how that works, isn't it?
So we do, do we see some bonding points being earned here?
Well, they have tiered assignments.
Or extra credit.
So, no, it's not extra credit. They have tiered assignments, and that's one of the, this is one of the ones that seems to kind of wait until, until the end.
Oh.
Are we not as exciting as the sports games or?
We're more excited. You tell us that.
It just looks a little different.
This is, I think, the third time we've used this. This is a pretty sophisticated setup. I'll edit it later. We're doing it live on the fly back here, so.
Cool.
Do you get extra points by making Mr. Petrusy more photogenic? Is that possible?
You, you better get your superior points.
If you go through that way to add height, some of us need a little help.
But we do appreciate you coming out and taking the class and getting everything that you do.
We do.
Thank you. Um, that's the end of information. Next week, on, under athletics and extracurricular, we're gonna ask you to set a resignation, employee personnel. Under budget and finance, approve reimbursement for credits earned. Approve expenditures for high school renovation project. Approve the Beni Bose lease agreement. Approve the purchase of the student van. Informally approve the school resource officer agreement. There won't be anything to require other buildings around for safety, employee relations, negotiations, transportation, and food service. Under a personnel extracurricular, we're gonna ask you to approve substitute teachers and support personnel. Approve new parent volunteers, employee personnel. Approve leave requests. Approve intern assignments. Approve an early graduation request. Approve, um, two expulsion agreements. And approve a retirement, a retirement resignation. Under Policy Public Relations Legislative Title II, exception to follow the Information Committee meeting minutes of September second, two thousand fourteen. Final approval of board policies and administrative regulations. Tentatively approve additional board policies and administrative regulations. Under taxes, insurance, census, appoint for capital, capital and occupational residence tax collector. That's it.
Okay, uh, thank you, Dr. Harris. Uh, at this point, we would normally have a commission of visitors, but no visitors have signed up this week. Uh, that being said, our next board meeting, oh, our next board meeting is next Monday. Same place, same time. Um, I'll call for adjournment. This meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-one. Thank you.